This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the town of North Haven.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our March Board of Selectment meeting. I'm Mike Friedip, joined as always by our second selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our third selectwoman, Ms. Sally Buemi. Thank you for joining us this evening. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item number two, any public comments to our agenda?
I appreciate removing public comment to the beginning.
Okay. Oh, well, Charles, so it's public comment in the beginning to the agenda itself. Any agenda items? And then public comment comes in afterwards again, okay?
I move that we move public comment from the end of the meeting to the beginning.
It's always been at the end because sometimes people enjoy commenting on things that we discuss in the meeting. But it's something that we could consider, but to do it at this last moment for this meeting doesn't seem right. Isn't that one of the advantages of having it at the end of the meeting? I mean, I make public comment at a lot of other meetings.
Sometimes people might come in a little bit late and miss it. You know, if they arrive a few minutes late, if he makes one comment and we do public comment, and they get here five minutes into the meeting, and we already did public comment.
Yeah, we are allowed to change the agenda because it's not a special meeting, but I think Val makes a good point. We're still kind of young, it's starting at 6:30, and some people do come in late. So we'll leave it.
I've got no problem.
You've got the gavel, wait, where's your gavel?
Where's the gavel, Bill?
Oh, well. It's your call, but those are the arguments, pro and con.
Bill, what do you think?
I mean, I'm okay with, you know, we have a very short agenda tonight anyhow, so it won't go very long, but...
Tell you what, I'll wait till you...
Oh, no, but I don't mind doing it, you know. I think, you know, other than if you'll, and you can't see the agenda, other than Mike making a few comments, we just have one appointment and some property tax refunds, so it could be over, I mean, in 10 minutes, we could be on the...
I'll have to wait till then.
Okay.
Okay.
You know, if it was a longer meeting, you know, like it was going to take, like, it could be 45 minutes or something, it...
It might run long.
Yeah, it's like, it shouldn't be running this long tonight. So Mike's going to make a few comments and then we'll move on.
This might be the longest part of the meeting right now.
All right, so then if Mr. Wickline's willing to wait, then we'll keep the agenda as is. And we'll move to item number three, the approval of the minutes for the Board of Selectmen.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of February 3rd, 2022.
I'll second that approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so I'd like to direct your attention to the screen. Putting together an overview for those watching on TV tonight. And we will start with a financial update. So as many of you know, we lost our finance director, Ed Swankowski, passed away in January. Many of us are still grieving over that. But I wanted to provide a quick update as to where we are at this point in time. We have worked with our auditors, I've spent a lot of time with our auditors, and we've closed this past fiscal year that ended on June 30th, 2021. We asked for an extension on the closing. We received the extension, and we finally have put those numbers together. This past week, we finalized a very comprehensive annual financial report that every municipality is obligated to do. That has been done. The hard copies are being FedExed to me tomorrow. I anticipate having them Monday, and they will go, in addition to myself, to the Board of Finance at the next Board of Finance meeting, which I'll talk about shortly. All of the state filings have been completed. We've spent a lot of time on this, and Valerie was very helpful to me on one of the state filings, on the coronavirus fund report that we had to, all of us as municipalities, had to report to the state, back to the federal government, the utilization of those funds. That's been done. And I've spent hours and hours and hours on some of the filings that I've been involved with, including that comprehensive annual financial report. So we are still out of my office managing all the aspects of our financial department and the administrative issues in the town that normally would be the role of the Director of Finance. So I'm happy to report that everything is still on target and on track in terms of meetings, with one exception. We are moving up one day, the Board of Finance meeting, to March 15th. That's being done because I'm having the auditor come in at that meeting, and he had his own conflict on the 16th. So I've asked him to come in, we've cleared it with the Board of Finance members. So the Board of Finance meeting, Valerie's re-noticing it, that will be on March 15th, Tuesday, March 15th, at 6:30, versus Wednesday, March 16th, at 6:30. Everything else is on track. The town budget, public hearing, Tuesday, April 5th, 7:00 PM, North Haven High School. Annual Budget Town Meeting, Monday, May 9th, again, 7:00 PM, at the high school. And then the referendum will be on Tuesday, May 17th. From an economic development standpoint, I just wanted to report some of the projects that I'm personally involved with, and here's where we are. So the 80,000-square-foot retailer At Home, we had a little bit of a delay. For those who are in business, you know that supply chains are backed up in a lot of different categories. And as far as retailers are concerned, racking systems and shelves are part of a supply chain backlog. The good news here is that we are still on track to have that retailer open up at the site of the old Toys R Us, Babies R Us in Alta by June 30th of this year. If you drive by there, you will see work being done on the inside. Some of the areas are boarded up, there are workers on the inside. That project is moving along, and once again, will open by the end of June. Panera Bread, the standalone restaurant, ground will be breaking on that in early April. That will go next to the Chick-fil-A in front of the Cinemark, and it will be joined by a Hampton Inn that's being built, and that Hampton Inn will also break around in April. The Five Guys is on track for Washington Avenue. That's near the Guilford Savings Bank. The target opening date on that is June 1st. The Starbucks, the new Starbucks with a drive-thru, will be also opening up next to the Five Guys in that new plaza that's being built, and that target date also is June 1st. A couple of other things I wanted to share, you know, sometimes, and I mentioned this at a Chamber of Commerce breakfast meeting a few weeks ago. Sometimes underneath or behind the scenes of the glitz and glitter of these brand-new retailers opening up, or stores opening up, there's very important businesses that have come to the town that don't get as much notoriety, if you will, as an At Home would be. And At Home is a major retailer, one of the largest in the country. So you all know Home Depot. Well, we have a store, of course, Home Depot, but what a lot of people don't realize is that if you go in and order a refrigerator or stove from Home Depot, and you ask to have Home Depot install it, well, there's a series of contractors that Home Depot works with, some of whom are Home Depot employees, others are contracted out. So we brought the contracting services business of Home Depot into North Haven, and that's a new business on Elm Street, Elm and Bailey. So what that means is that if somebody in North Haven, as an example, were to order a new stove, order a new refrigerator, the contracting services now who will install that are located in North Haven. Sandow Construction, this is a company that came in here from Maryland. It's a new business also on Elm Street. The Quench Beverage Distribution Facility, brand-new business in town, also on Elm Street. Phoenix Fitness, a new business came in, it's a health club facility, very popular, came in from another city, and that's now on Massimo Drive. We've been working with Pokimoto Hawaiian Restaurant. So they've committed to come to North Haven. We're not sure yet. They're looking both on Universal Drive, next to the New Jersey Mikes, or on Washington Avenue, near the Five Guys. So that location is yet to be determined, but they've committed to come to North Haven. And then moving into the Home Depot Plaza, in between Dick's Sporting Goods and the actual Home Depot store, is Crumble Cookie. A small business, but a cookie store that I hope people will like. We've had a lot of success these past two years with opening up a couple of new bakeries in town that have been very popular, but this is very popular in other parts of the East Coast, so we're hoping that it's a success here in our town. So we have some problems, and there are some work-in-progress projects that yours truly is personally working on. DSW left the store on Universal Drive, and they moved to Hampton. They were able to get half the rent structure that they were paying in North Haven. The Rite Aid on Middletown Avenue has closed. I spoke with Rite Aid, and essentially, the business in our store in North Haven plummeted. And North Haven Store is sandwiched, or was sandwiched, between the store on Route 80 in East Haven, the Rite Aid, and the Rite Aid about two and a half or three miles up the road on Route 17, that's in Norfolk. So unfortunately, now, we've got to figure out a solution there. We've reached out to Walgreens and CVS, and I'm not, I don't think we're going to get another drugstore there. So we're looking at how we're going to repurpose that building and find a new business to come in. The old Howard Johnson's at the Fairgrounds, that project is still moving along, although slowly. If that project goes through, and this is something I'm spending a lot of time on, because there's three different parties. There's the owner of the building, there's the owner of the parking lot, separate and distinct from the owner of the building, and then there's the franchisee that I brought into town to meet with the owner of the parking lot, which is the Fairgrounds, and the owner of the building. If that goes through, that'll be a Sonic drive-thru with a 7-Eleven and a Sunoco gas pump format. So we're trying to figure out how we can get that done. And that'll be a nice little highway rest stop area if we can get it done. Stop &amp; Shop Plaza on the south side, unfortunately, the empty spots there, they're still collecting rent on. So we've got to push them to try to get some new businesses in there. I had a lot of new businesses that want to go in there. But if you're a plaza owner and you're already getting rent from old leases, sometimes there's not much motivation. But that's something that's really been on my radar screen, and we're going to get things done there. The nine acres in front of Amazon, on the north side of the driveway, I think what you're going to see, what we're working on, is a brand-new plaza format there. A new retailer coming in. It's not been finalized yet, but if we can deliver that, that'll be on those nine acres, right in front of Amazon, very nice business to complement what we're trying to do on Washington Avenue. There's 72 acres at the end of Dodge Avenue. 48 are developable. So we have a major new industry that wants to move in there. So I'm working not only with that industry, but also the owner of the property to try to bring this forward, to go to the town regulatory bodies. So we'll see how that ends up. 1,000 Universal Drive is the site of the old Otis Spunkmeyer. Prior to that, it was Pennant Foods. If you were to drive by there now, all you would see is what looks to be a brushy area with high grass, bushes, some small trees. That'll be the site of a future new retail plaza. And that location is between the Water Pollution Control Authority and the Nissan dealership. There will be movement on this, and empty land will be transformed into a retail plaza that may end up housing approximately 70,000 square feet of new retail business on two buildings on that site. And the former Dino's, we worked with the owner of the property to have it torn down. I'd like to get a restaurant in there, something new and unique. However, with the emergence of medical facilities, there's some interest from some medical facilities and doctors that may want to go there. So we'll see where that ends up, but that is another site that's going to be developed. On a totally different update, our town attorney is presiding over meetings with our Housing Authority Committee, as we've reported here many times. At one of the last meetings, I gave Sally and Bill a book that's a work-in-progress update. This is a mandate for all municipalities. By the end of June of 2022, we have to submit an affordable housing plan. The committee's been meeting, it's a series of public meetings, and this is the latest. Those meetings are ongoing. We have been promoting the survey to get people to fill out the survey, to get the public engaged in this process. There have been 506 responses to the survey as of yesterday, and we thank those who've responded. The information gathered via the survey will be included in the overall plan. So we've got a few more months on this, March, April, May, June, four months. That housing committee, though, I've spoken to many of them, they're engaged, they enjoy being on the committee, and we will see what their recommendations are that will come eventually to the Board of Selectmen. On February 22nd, the town attorney asked me if I would approve a concept that had the Planning and Zoning Commission have a joint meeting with the committee so that the Planning and Zoning Commission can hear some of the updates from the 506 responses and engage with the committee. And the goal here is to have the Planning and Zoning Commission have more knowledge before any application comes before them in the future, or anything happens in the future, whether it's an affordable housing application or anything regarding affordable housing. So that is what's happening there. Actually, that meeting was already held, I said on February 22nd. There's a couple of meetings going on, that's already been held. That was something that is different than one that I just mentioned. There's another meeting coming up, but I'm not going to comment on that tonight because this is strictly on affordable housing. Representatives of our Council of Governments, of which I was chairman this past year, all the mayors in the region, and a consultant, RKG, that the COG, the Council of Governments, hired, attended that meeting and presented a summary of housing demographics and preliminary locational analysis that they conducted. So that was a very good meeting that took place. They also discussed potential goals to be included in the plan. A good collaborative meeting, of which a lot of information was shared. Upcoming meetings on March 8th, March 15th, March 23rd, and the 31st. The meeting on the 15th will be a joint meeting with the P&amp;Z Commission. All meetings start at 6:00 PM, and they're held in the library community room, and also via Zoom. This is important, and this is what we're really trying to encourage and promote, that the public come in and comment on the meetings. It's anticipated that the draft plan will then be presented, as I alluded to a few moments ago, to this Board of Selectmen at the April meeting. So I want to just conclude with some public service announcements. We have two major problems in town that I really need your help on. And it's gotten to the point where neither our police nor our Public Works can keep up with this anymore. And the two major concerns and problems are speeding and littering. So to give you an example on the speeding, our police officers have stopped people from speeding in town, and as they're writing the tickets, other cars are speeding by. I think what's happened is this, and it's particularly become exacerbated in the last two years during this pandemic. I think that many people who are driving through the town have been so cooped up with this pandemic that sometimes the manifestation of being isolated, the manifestation of that turns into speeding when people get into their cars. So we've got to understand that until people take the responsibility for looking at the speedometer when they're driving and slowing down, particularly in residential areas where there's children on streets, I need your help, ladies and gentlemen. I need everyone to really focus in on, when you're driving, and I do this myself, I'm constantly glancing down at that speedometer and see how fast I'm going, because it's easy to go 5, 10, 15, 20 miles over the speed limit. That has really been a problem here in town. Now, we're adding three officers in this year's budget to increase our patrols, but with 194 miles worth of roadways in town, with over 700,000 vehicles traveling through the town every day, you can well imagine that the police cannot keep up with it. As far as littering, I'll give you a specific example. Grover Wyman Park, and these are taxpayers' dollars now. I have litter patrols going through all the town, Public Works. We have people go around picking up litter. We've got two examples. One is Grover Wyman Park. We had a crew in there for two and a half hours, cleaned up the park. Five hours later, it was like they had never been there. The Bassett Road Bridge is another example, and I can cite probably 80 different examples across the town. We had a litter crew there for two hours. Three hours later, it was worse than what it was after I had Public Works clean it up. So if I can ask you for your help, please, and it might be people coming in from other towns, that we don't know. But when you have a town of which that people are starting to litter, it doesn't look good for the town. And of course, the speeding, that's a problem everywhere, ladies and gentlemen, all across the state, all across the country. Cars are faster now, people are driving faster, but we must be cognizant of these two problems that our town is seeing now. I thank you in advance for your support on this, and that's all I have.
Mike, do we have a public ordinance to, for people, if we go back to the parks and find somebody has engaged in littering, that we can find them?
Yes.
So I mean, I definitely encourage the, maybe we actually start doing that because the word gets around. You know, I mean, that might not be a bad, you know, on occasion for the police department to check and see if we can actually find who's, you know, if you clean, we cleaned the park, and three hours later, it's been, so let's clean it and then stake it out.
Valley Service Road, I drove by, I drove down there over the weekend because we're working with Amazon to get that road connected. The goal is to take 20% of the traffic off of Washington Avenue. It was an absolute disgrace, Valley Service Road. Construction materials, loads of bricks, concrete, sofas, mattresses, strewn all over Valley Service Road, from beyond the game going back to where we're building the Amazon Road. And, you know, that's an area in town that, you know, that people could go there at night and drop things off, and you know when you would know it unless, of course, a police officer caught them in the act. It was an absolute disgrace, ladies and gentlemen, an absolute disgrace. So guess what has to happen now? Because we're getting ready to finalize that road, I have to send Public Works taxpayers' dollars to clean it up, and they spend hours there trying to clean it up. And it's going to be a very important road once that road gets connected because we're going to have to pave it, we'll have to stripe it, and we've got to somehow control it so that we can't have this littering there happen on a continued basis.
Yeah, I've been down Valley Service Road, and I've seen lots of big items, mattresses, couches. It's bad. One thing that comes to my mind specifically for that type of littering, which is, you know, household items, you know, a few years back, you lose track of how many years. A while back, we used to have bulk pickup any week, but now it's just twice a year, two weeks in April and two weeks in September. Do you, has there been any noticeable increase in that type of dumping since we went to a more restricted bulk pickup? And could you consider maybe three times a year? You know, that's the only thing that comes to my mind because I saw that too, and it was, it was really, really tough, you know?
So we certainly could consider.
Yeah, I mean, anything could be considered, but I wondered if there was any correlation in the increase in that type of dumping and the reduction in the frequency of our bulk pickup, that's all.
I'm not sure.
It's just a thought.
So you saw it too, then, you saw it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I've been down there, yeah.
But I think, I think, but Mike's other point too is just that I think based on its proximity to the highway, you know, you might have a lot of, you might have people out of town dumping too, because it's a, you know, place to dump. You know, over by the, I've seen people, you know, I've seen stuff that has been dumped in the Big Field by the seniors now, off of pool there too. I mean, I think we put some fences up to further kind of restrict the entrance from the far side, you know, where people, you know, pull in, you know, off a pool and dump stuff. Yeah, I think, I'd like to see the most stringent possible ordinance we have for people littering and find them to the extent, the greatest extent that we can, because I'm tired of picking up litter on my front yard, on Bassett Road.
So, you know, Bill doesn't live too far from that bridge, and that's, it's something about that area, people just throw things out of their window.
Oh, yeah, it's a cut-through. I mean, people are using that as a cut-through to avoid Washington Avenue, you know, and are going down the road there and maybe getting on 91 at 12 or 13, you know, and, you know, is a way not to avoid the, is a way to avoid, you know, they're always speeding on that road, so.
So I leave you with this, okay? Because what happens is, and I'm totally engaged with the public, you know, I talk to everybody, people call, I'm engaged in social media. And what happens is inevitably, people may think that, why is, they'll say, why is it happening? Well, I give you one example, one reason why I think it's happening, but I really am convinced that whether it's this government or any other local government, and I've talked to a lot of the mayors across the state, that we're having a difficult time in local government controlling the bad behavior of littering and speeding. And think about 194 miles worth of roadways, 22.2 miles of geography. We're larger geographically than the city of New Haven. It's impossible. Police officers are responding to calls, whether it be 911 calls or whether it be calls of other natures, okay, or domestic calls. Public Works during the course of the day, they're picking up trash, picking up recycling. They're on drainage projects that I've got them on throughout the town. So it's not like they're just patrolling, looking for things to do. Both entities, police, fire also for the large part, and Public Works, they're engaged in their responsibilities. So when I have to have Public Works spend hours and hours and hours every week cleaning up litter, it's taking them away from some of the other core services that are most important to the residents. And that's kind of my appeal tonight, see what we can do as a community to mitigate it.
You know, again, it's not practical for the road I live on, but do we have roads that are, that should be just maybe local residents that people elsewhere in the town are using as cut-throughs?
I think that's...
You don't have to answer that question, you know, but I think it's more a rhetorical question. Because, you know, when I, you know, like when I visited Austin, you know, where my son lives, they put speed bumps through residential areas, and they're Texas speed bumps. I mean, you're not going to be able to go over these at more than about 5 or 10 miles an hour. So, you know, I mean, things like that, I mean, you know, people increasingly are speeding through, you know, the road that I live on is, you know, it's going to be hard to do much with that without, except, without putting police officers on there to catch the speeders and the litterers because it is kind of a main, even though it is a cut-through, it's more of a main road. But I bet you there's people in local, much smaller roads that shouldn't be used, you know... shouldn't be used, you know, that are seeing the same problem, people just using them as an alternate route, because especially with GPS and everything, it's, you know, encouraging people to, to take, you know, side roads and everything, you know, to avoid a little bit of traffic, especially if they put it up on their car, so.
Okay, so.
Yeah, littering is a big problem. You know, when I grew up here in town in the 60s, you know, you talked about this being a widespread problem, and there, when I was growing up, there were so many ads on TV, very poignant ads about littering, you know, and you don't see that anymore. And when I first noticed the rise in littering, I attributed a lot of it to fast food drive-ins, because we didn't have drive-ins, you know, you had to go in McDonald's and eat, and before you left, you dumped your garbage right there. And, you know, I, I, and so I think the dramatic increase in drive-through for everything now is drive-through increases litter and, and just apathy, and I, maybe you could use some of your powers in the COG or other organizations and see if you could advocate for some, some more advertising. You know the ads I'm talking about? We're not that far apart.
I remember it, yeah.
Yeah, and they were very poignant and very impactful about litter.
One, one.
Yes, it was an award-winning advertising campaign, and, you know, you don't see that. So, I think a combination of that and apathy and drive-throughs, you know, it's sad, you know, that it's come to this, where you, very, you know, we have to sit here and ask people, grown people, because they're, they're driving in cars, throwing stuff out their, you know, their, well, their windows to not, please not litter, but that's where we're at, so.
Yeah, okay.
I have a couple of other comments on your overview, if I may, I'll try to do it very quickly. First, I think these combination meetings with the Affordable Housing Committee and the P&amp;Z is a really great idea, and the way you described it, I think it effectuates a lot of positive energy for, for both of those committees, because they certainly are interconnected. But I did want to comment on the very beginning of your overview, which was about finances, and I share your sentiments again. We all are still missing the, you know, missing our finance director, Ed Sminkowski, who tragically passed away in January, and you, you know, you talked about how your office is handling the finances, and you first presented me and Bill with, with your sort of takeover of finances at the Board of Selectmen Budget Workshop, and you explained a lot of reorganization, which I don't want to get into all of that now, because we have the public caring for that. And I've been thinking a lot about it, about you serving as, in effect, the finance director. And again, this is the only time I could really speak about town issues, you've heard me say this 100 times, is here at a Board of Selectmen meeting. I can't call you up and tell you my thoughts on these issues, so I have to share them here. And since you brought it up in your overview, I, I've been thinking a lot about it, and I have the greatest respect, working with you for eight-plus years, for your amazing administrative duties and your high energy for economic development, which you outlined tonight in great detail. I'm starting to wonder if it is just, just too much, and I think back to last year's budget process, where you were emphasizing the importance of three people in this government when you were doing some salary parity, which was the finance director, police captain, the, excuse me, the police chief and the fire chief, and you were outlining the importance of the finance director's duties, not only in finance, but in human resources, community services, recreation. And again, I do understand there's changes going on there to help alleviate all of that for you, but certainly the message last year with that parity argument was the importance of that position. And I just wonder, I'm starting to wonder, I'll certainly give it some time and see how it goes, but I just hope it, I'm just starting to wonder if maybe we should have a finance director. But I'm certainly at this time still prepared to wait, to do a wait-and-see and how all of your other ideas and, that you have in place, which I'm sure you'll explain to the folks, works out, but, you know, a lot of these things have been coming through my mind. And I just wondered if you know how many other towns our size with 100 million-plus budgets do not have budget, do not have finance directors?
Well, I don't know the exact number, but I can tell you this, I know that I'm one of the few, or we are one of the few, I should say, where the first selectman or the mayor has been so involved with the finances for the past 12 years.
I understand that, and again, that's why I preface my comments with my greatest respect for your high energy and your administrative prowess, but I just have been thinking about it, honestly, and, you know, I am, when you first presented the entire picture at the Board of Selectmen Budget Workshop, I, you know, absorbed it, and now that I'm thinking more about it, I kind of have a wait-and-see attitude about it. So, I just wanted to share that with you. So, thank you for your time.
Very good.
Okay?
Yeah, Sally, I think those are good comments, because I think there's a, I mean, you know, the good news is that, you know, Mike and, and not only, you know, through all his tenure, and that's even true, I think, for, you know, the people that, you know, were before Mike, you know, that were first select men or women, you know, I think everybody's tried to run the town as lean as possible, and I think that's, you know, like Stacy's a good example, like both being the, what, town clerk and the tax collector, because there's three municipalities in the state of Connecticut or something that don't have that as a dual position, you know, like you said earlier, Ed wearing, you know, dual hats and stuff like that. So, you know, I think it's just a reflection that maybe we've, you know, put our money in, you know, like, like Mike said, I mean, we're putting our money in, in public safety with firemen and, more firemen and more police instead of, you know, some administrative positions that are sometimes equally as important, but, you know, we've, you know, I think we've had to prioritize and to try to, you know, get the most possible and do the most that we can for the, for the, you know, for the citizens of North Haven. So, but yeah, you're exactly right. I mean, if we had a, sometimes I'm amazed by some of the other municipalities in, in our general area, they have positions that I couldn't even conceive of, that aren't much bigger than us.
Well, I can say, excuse me, well, I can say this, Mike, don't get sick, because you're, you're, you're.
But I appreciate it, I do appreciate it, I understand what you're saying.
You put in a tremendous amount of effort in economic development, and from what I hear from folks, they really appreciate that in you, and they want you to continue doing that, and, you know, the finance director wore many hats, and that's why you made that parity, that parity proposal last year, and so that is weighing heavily. So, let's, let's wait and see, and again, thank you, and thank you, Bill, for your acknowledgement.
No, and you and I, you know, I was going to say something similar too, that, you know, you and I were both, I think, would have been, based on, you were on the Board of Finance and me, and I think I offered, I know you probably did too, that, you know, we would have, if he needed us, we would have been more than glad to fill in, but, you know, instead, I know he relied, as he said earlier, on Valerie, and, you know, I think he did the same, we did the same thing with, with, you know, that Mike did when people needed help getting their shots or, you know, their COVID shots and stuff like that, you know, Bell and Tammy did stuff that, I mean, arranged appointments and did things that, you know, no other, you know, no other people would do, even though it clearly wasn't your, you know, your jobs to do that, to help out, you know, help other people out, so. So, I think, you know, it's been, there's been a history of people in this town doing that.
Yes, but the finance director does so, a finance director does so much, not only in promulgating the budget, overseeing the budget, bidding, the bidding process, bonding matters, you know, it goes on and on.
So, at the April meeting, I will, I will articulate the plan that I presented to you and Bill at the Board of Selectmen Workshop, and I just want to say one final thing, thanks for the comments on economic development.
Yes.
What I've tried to do down through the years on this is save the town $100,000 a year in salary, because that's what the economic development directors are paid in other cities and towns. So, I came from the business world, I'm very, very comfortable in dealing with big businesses, medium-sized businesses, and small businesses. So, rather than, I could have made it easier for myself, rather than hire a $100,000 a year person, and then another $35,000 or $40,000 in benefits, so that's a $140,000 package, I've chosen to do it myself, and that's why you've never seen an economic development director here, because it would have been $140,000 a year for the last 12 years in expenses for the town, and I'm very comfortable doing it, and we've had some success.
Yes.
Yet, we've had still some more that I'm not satisfied with, we've got to get done, so.
I understand, okay.
All right? Okay, so why don't we continue? Let's go to item number five. I want to turn it over to you.
Okay. I will do five, Bill, okay? We have appointments and resignations, we have just one appointment, so I will make a motion to approve the appointment of James Thompson, 18 Carriage Drive, to the Inland Wetlands Commission as an alternate for a four-year term to expire December 31st, 2025.
I'll second his appointment to the Inland Wetlands Commission.
I'd like to thank Jim for agreeing to do this. He's the former plant manager at Praxair here in North Haven, has a great deal of experience in many, many areas, and I think he'd be a welcome addition to our wetlands commission. So, all those in, a motion to accept, a second?
Yep.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, next.
I'll make a motion to approve the, all of which are relatively small, and in keeping with what we've done before, all the property tax refunds listed, I'll make a motion to approve them.
Second.
Okay, any other discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Charles, we're in public comment.
Harold Whitman, 1663 Hartford Turnpike. How long has the Valley Service Road been under construction?
It's been under construction for probably a year and a half, but what happens, Charles, is that, dirt in this past year was a good example. Amazon, the, first of all, there's certain work periods, you can't work during certain months, the contractor won't work during the winter if it's bad weather, but also, because Amazon's peak season is November and December, they want, they don't want any activity in that area, so they've asked us to, they asked us to, you know, not to continue the construction there in those months. So, that's the short answer. Number one, weather. Number two, Amazon's peak season shuts down the construction for at least seven or eight weeks.
Mr. Piper.
Piper, Piper.
That's okay, that's no problem.
Your suggestion about speed bumps, you might want to run that by the fire department.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, the, well, the other thing too is in Austin, they have no snow, or very little snow, but it's, it's really discouraging that, you know, I see it, like tonight, I was, you know, along Mike's, Mike's comments, you know, there, I think a lot of people have been cooped up, there were a lot of people when I came to the meeting tonight walking, you know, around the green and on the sidewalks, and, you know, it's just not, you know, I think it's just a breakdown in the social contract that people are so inconsiderate that they risk, you know, other people's lives, you know, by speeding, and, and then, I've been on my front lawn and people have thrown out litter while I've been standing there, you know? I mean, I think that's just horrible.
Charles, you were in construction, right, at one point?
Forty-five years ago.
So, you're, I just want to comment on the speed bump issue, so you probably are well aware then that when you put a speed bump on a street, it can alter the drainage of the street. In other words, speed bump, you may have puddles on both sides of the, either side or one side of that speed bump, that in a transitional, going from warmer weather to cold weather, it can become an ice bump. That's one dilemma. The engineers will say, speed bumps will alter the drainage of a road. Secondly, even though some other cities and towns have them, the plows tend to tear them up, I'm sorry. And then, thirdly, and I didn't realize this, because I talked to some other mayors who had speed bumps, and some towns had to take them out, because if, let's say, you live across, if you lived right next to the speed bump, because you live on Hartford Turnpike, let's say there was a speed bump in front of your house, some people complain, because all they hear all day long is bum-bum, 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 day and night, and that people have called different city halls and town halls and asked to take them out. So, the notion, the concept of a speed bump can slow the traffic down, but other mayors have told me that where they've left the speed bumps, after the car slows down, the car speeds up to get away, because he just slowed down. So, that's why Sally and Bill, North Haven, long before we sat on this Board of Selectmen, never had speed bumps, and the fire department is another one, like Charles said, because they cannot afford to slow down if there's a 911 call for a fire. You're absolutely right.
You made an assumption I did not voice, I didn't say I wanted speed bumps, I said simply.
You're bringing up another.
Yeah, no, I'm actually supporting your point of view on this, okay, so, because that's what the fire department would say.
Ms. Blimby.
Yes.
I followed your report on the incredible burden that 85 streets put down on the North Haven Fire Department.
I'm sorry?
I followed your.
Maybe you should come to the mic, so the people.
Yeah, because they can hear you, Charlie, if you speak into that.
I followed your economic impact report you made on the Divine Street on the North Haven Fire Department, the endless calls for paramedics. Yale pays for fire services in New Haven, and Justin Elicker has been very aggressive at extracting money from Yale too, so why don't we try that since?
I have suggested that we get, we get a voluntary payment from Yale for quite a few years.
So, let me draw the distinction though.
Yes.
Justin Elicker, and I know him well, I talk to him a lot, he's, he's been able to deal with the university to get more money, not the hospital, those two separate entities.
I know.
So, he's, we don't have Yale University here, but the president of Yale and the mayor of New Haven have come to an agreement where they're going to be providing more pilot money, but to my knowledge, the hospital has not agreed to anything.
Well, why don't we ask them?
I think they've turned down the city of New Haven, that's, he asked them, so.
But you're so persuasive, as you point out endlessly, and they have so much money.
And actually, in the, you know, and again, I'm not an expert on their finances, I think in the register this past week or so, the hospital claimed that they were going to have a multimillion-dollar loss for the, you know, for last year and expect one for this year.
Well, being in construction, Yale recently pulled a permit for almost $900 million to build another new hospital, so.
And they did acquire like three other hospitals recently.
Oh, yeah, they're, yeah, they're struggling.
So, it's always hard to say what their finances look like, but.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you for coming tonight, we're always, we're always glad when people do, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know, I thought you were done, but thank you for coming tonight.
I had to get my papers. You're welcome. I see that we're building a new second playground at Green Acres School, now they built a new one there four years ago, why aren't we building another one when enrollment's cratering?
Well, a couple of things. First one was underwritten by Quinnipiac University, and the second one's more of a kindergarten playscape, I believe, and it was, quite frankly, unsafe for the children. So, you have a smaller group of children playing on one playscape, and then the, let's say the third, fourth, and fifth graders playing on the other playscape, so that's why it's being built, so.
Do you remember when you mailed this to me?
Well, I don't, I'm not responsible for the mailing of that, so, but, so it did go out though, yes.
Before the election?
Yes.
And when was the election?
November.
Okay, I'm going to quote from this, "A new pre-kindergarten playground has been installed at Green Acres School. I drove by Green Acres School to check, and it is not finished."
Well, I don't know what to tell you, so, I mean, it's being built, and there is a new one in the back, so.
Would you like to read it?
I believe it, so.
Okay.
Isn't that referencing the first one that we did, though?
Well, it should have been referencing the first one in the back, right, so.
Right, but isn't that what that was referring to?
Yeah, I thought so, but Charles seems to think.
Depositing of any snow from public driveways into public streets, supposed to shovel your sidewalk within 24 hours, you're supposed to take the snow off your roof of your car. So, this is back to Ms. Blimby.
Yes.
If someone slips and falls on the sidewalk that wasn't shoveled within 24 hours, are we in some way negligent, or do we have exposure because we failed to enforce that regulation?
My opinion that it's the landowner's obligation to shovel. So, if the fall is a result of ice or snow on the sidewalk?
What if they decided to sue North Haven, because they said you refused to enforce the regulation, and I would have been safe if you had done so?
Well, any suit can be brought. Well, any suit can be brought, whether it would, the merits of it, I don't know. But certainly that suit could be brought. I mean, everybody always asks me that question all the time. Could I sue? Sure, you could. Will you win? I don't know.
It's the American pastime.
Yes, it is. But as a practicing attorney for the past thirty-eight years, most slip and falls are against the property owner.
I didn't know if this had been ruled on in the past.
But you're, you're, you're making an additional claim of a lack of enforcement of existing ordinances, therefore leading to people not following the rule as a cause of action.
I believe the expression is deep pockets.
Yes, it is very deep. But what is the cause of the fall? Causation is always the issue in fall downs. Is it the lack of enforcement of the ordinance or the lack of shoveling the ice and snow? So I, you know.
Thank you for the education.
Okay.
I have some help for you, Mr. Frida.
You have some help?
Obviously busy. You are on the executive board of the South Central Regional Council of Governments. You are the current vice chairman of the Board of Directors for Workforce Alliance. You are on the executive board of Director Council of Small Towns. You are the co-chair of the New Haven Hartford Springfield Rail Advisory Committee, a member of the Police Officer Standards and Training Council. Serves on the executive board of the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, Executive Board of Directors for Greater New Haven Transit District. You were invited, served on the Community Committee of Reopen Connecticut. Perhaps you could just let some of these go and stay right here and do all that work that you have to do.
So you'll be happy to hear that I just turned a gavel over as chairman of the council of governments.
That's one?
That's one, right, so.
Five, six, seven, eight, nine. How about two more? Then Ms. Boemi wouldn't have to worry about you being overburdened either.
So you think two more, Charlie? You think I gotta, I should kind of extricate myself from two more of those?
Yes, because I have another job that I want to put on you.
What is it? Tell me.
Okay, we have a thing at the house that, oh, once a month, we get pizza from Antonio's out on Washington Street.
Yeah.
And this has been going on for a while. And when COVID hit, I wouldn't stay inside the place. I'd just walk outside and walk around. And I kept going over to the flats. So for eighteen straight months, I've counted about twenty-five cars that are registered out of state. And what do we do to get them to register here since I just mailed my check in?
Yeah, so let me explain that, because this has come up before, okay? And several years ago, we did hire someone to, to police that. And we actually recouped some revenue. But what you're seeing over at the flats, Charlie, is Quinnipiac students that are, that are there attending college. And we've never, because they're not here all year long, and because they go back and forth to their own homes on weekends or long weekends or whatever it may be, we don't tax students who are going to school here. However, and we, and we've, we've, we've caught a lot of, a lot of this when I'm about to tell you. If there's people who live in town with plates that are Florida or Maine or whatever, or they're having company cars and the cars are registered out of state, those will be taxed by the assessor, but college students, we don't do it.
Did you say they aren't here in the summer?
Well, they're not here three hundred and sixty-five days a year, the college students.
Well, they live there in the building.
Right, but we don't tax college students for cars, so.
Is that true of all college students in town or just Quinnipiac students?
Well, at the flats, that's where the, that, the flats have a master lease with Quinnipiac University for the college students, so. I, I'd have to check if the city of New Haven. I don't think they do it with Yale students who have cars. I really don't, so.
So we tax, I don't understand, we don't tax the car?
The car's registered in where the student really lives.
Or used to live.
Well, if they're, they're not here three hundred and sixty-five days a year, they go back to their homes. Let's say somebody's coming in from Albany, okay, it's a New York plate. Well, that's where the car is registered, and that's where the car is taxed, so.
Plus, they may not even be owner of the car.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, good, sorry.
They, they, they may be owned still, you know, by their parents.
Well, I, I don't think, going to college in a municipality establishes residency. I went to law school in Springfield, Massachusetts for three years, and my car was there ten months out of the year, and I paid tax here in North Haven. You have to be careful of that. I mean, we do have students here. We have the medical school, the law school, and nursing school. But we also have a lot of students who are residents of North Haven going to school at, in other states. Do we want to, and they're taking their cars to those states. Do we want to lose the tax revenue from, from those cars?
That's what would happen, that's what would happen, right.
Yeah. But I, I've never, I, I, I don't think being a student here establishes residency for the purposes of taxes, car taxes.
Okay.
You know, and they're, they're paying tax somewhere else. When, when I lived in Springfield for three years, for ten months out of the year, I paid tax on my car here in North Haven.
Another legal question. What's the statute of limitations of someone who lives here and keeps out-of-state plates on their car?
I, I do not know the answer to that. Statute of limitations is a restriction on time to bring a lawsuit. Are you saying criminal statute of limitations or?
Well, I'm about to confess to a crime, and I was just wondering if I was going to get busted for it.
I, I cannot give legal advice.
Okay. I moved here from Illinois twenty years ago. There was no property tax, so I just left the cogger for five years with the Illinois plates on it. Nobody said anything.
Well, you, so you're saying you, you're driving with Illinois plates here in North Haven?
Fifteen years ago.
Oh, fifteen years ago.
Twenty to fifteen years ago.
He did for the first five years that he lived here.
Yeah, my sister would just mail me the registration back.
Sometimes what happens, Charlie, is that a neighbor may report it. And then at that point, the town's obligated to, to check it out or investigate it. And, but we're not, we're not out there, the assessor's not out there every day going to every house checking.
Oh, but now that you've given up three positions, you have time to start dealing with some things here in this town.
So.
You could drive around and get people that don't shovel their sidewalks and people who litter, and you could interact one-on-one, which we know you enjoy doing, Mr. Frida.
Well, that I do do. So you, you know me well enough to know that that I enjoy doing, yes.
I think everybody knows that.
So.
And last but not least, how much money are we getting from the federal government this year?
Three million, five hundred and four thousand.
How much next year?
Three million, five hundred and four thousand.
And how big's our tax cut going to be?
Say, say again?
How big is our tax cut going to be with all this economic development and government money, which I know you can't use directly for tax cuts?
I'm glad you said that, because you can't. So my goal is to have no tax increase. But you got to understand this, though, or you have to understand, not you got to understand, you have to. More proper, more proper English. You have to.
My mother taught English. I caught that. We didn't want to say anything.
So we continue to reinvest in the town. I, we could certainly cut taxes, but where do you, you want to lose police officers, firefighters, teachers?
False analogy, terrible analogy.
So we've got the, we're adding three officers, we're adding two more firefighters. We're adding equipment to the fire department. So, you know, if we, if I can, for multiple years, we've had no tax increases here. So, but at some point in time, when you continue to reinvest in the town, paving ten, twelve miles worth of roads a year, Charles, we're no different as a government than what you and others are experiencing in your own homes. We're part of an inflationary environment here. Costs are going up for the town, gasoline, diesel. When we go out, like, if we go out to pave a road, we don't do that ourselves. We have to hire contractors. You were in construction. The cost of those operations are going up for us. When we go out to bids, to bid for projects, we're finding that even the lowest bid is much higher than the previous service performed for that because of inflation. This is what we're faced with. So what's yours, what's your analysis of it?
Okay, two years ago, I paid a dollar ninety for a gallon of gas.
Right.
I would have paved a lot of roads then. This year, I wouldn't pave any roads at all if the price of oil is high.
Yeah.
One thing I learned when I was at Yale, their endless construction, was they sit on lots and lots of work until the economy crashes. And they underwent an enormous building campaign when the two thousand and eight crash came. All of a sudden, they had tons of work. And I would say we should look at that, where the price of oil is high, let's not pave much. The price of oil was a dollar ninety, let's pave more.
Okay. Well, I mean, we can certainly entertain that, but.
Mr. Pfeiffer, that was not fifteen minutes.
Okay.
I'm sorry about that, because I, I thought we'd go a little quicker than we did, but.
All right. Well, look, I haven't seen you, Charlie.
We're still glad you came.
Haven't seen you in years. Thanks for coming back. Yes, Mrs. Caldwell.
Just real quick on the meetings. You had mentioned March fifteenth was going to be a combination meeting, but that's also now the same night as the, just to throw it out, same night as the Board of Finance.
Yes.
And just in terms of traffic and speeding, Washington Avenue is a complete nightmare at six, at six o'clock at night. And people don't, going into Amazon, don't stop for red lights. I mean, there was a bus who went right through the red light. So I don't know if there's ever police officers that can sit and patrol that, especially at six o'clock, because it's a pretty dangerous intersection at that point in time. So just those comments. But I'm really here tonight to speak about civil discourse during town meetings. I was very disturbed when I watched the February tenth BOE meeting. Members of the public were yelling out, insulting and cursing at board members. They yelled and screamed at other residents in the audience who didn't agree with them. When the board tried to have a discussion about how the changes to mask mandates would be carried out, the individuals yelled out, interrupted discussion, and did not allow the board to proceed with the meeting. Ultimately, the meeting was adjourned without a meaningful discussion or conversation about how to roll out the changes. I've watched this disturbing trend take place at, at public meetings in town over the past so many years. But it's been exacerbated, obviously, by the discussions of masks and vaccines and mitigation strategies over the past year or so. There's been at least two BOE meetings within the last six months that have resulted in multiple outbursts, which ended because, which ended, and at least one which the meeting was ended because the disruption of the meeting, and the meeting couldn't continue. This type of disruption to meetings has occurred also at town meetings. I served on the Board of Ed for six years and had many controversial issues come before the board. And for the most part, residents came and passionately talked about their concerns, whether it was the music program or the ID program or special ed or a sports program that parents wanted to preserve, they would come, they would talk passionately. But they would allow board members to do their jobs. And it was, you know, you might be on a different side as somebody else, but you didn't feel that the, the meeting was being disrupted. However, on several occasions, I was actually concerned about my safety and the safety of others when we were discussing issues such as the turf fields and the school mascot. A group of residents came to both BOE and town meet, and town meetings and yelled, insulted, disrupted conversation, and used offensive language. Residents I know came before this board several years ago to request some action when Danielle Morphy's home was vandalized. I know Sally has had some issues at her home due to her position on her turf fields. At that time, the Board of Selectmen did not feel there was anything they can do to address the issue. I am requesting that the issue of civil discourse be placed on the agenda for the next selectman's meeting. This behavior would not be allowed from a child at any age who attends our schools. It should not be allowed at town meetings. The best way to prevent this behavior from continuing is to make it clear that anyone who engages in yelling, interrupting boards or commission discussions, cursing or threatening others at a public meeting will have to leave. This should be not just a written policy, but be carried out consistently during meetings. I want to be clear, I'm not talking about residents disagreeing with public officials or even verbalizing, "If you vote this way, I won't vote, I won't vote for you next time." I think that's, you know, you know, an appropriate way for the public to engage with elected officials. I'm talking about the yelling, the cursing, the interrupting, the threatening of other members of the public in the room. Allowing this to go on creates an environment where bullies win and civil discourse is not possible. I called the Freedom of Information Commission following that February meeting to determine whether there was any action that, that public officials could take when meetings are being disrupted. And there is a, a section in the FOI Act, which is Section one, two, three, two. I don't know, Sally, if I'm reading that exactly right, but the, and I want to just read it. It's about conduct in meetings. "In the event that any meeting of a public agency is interpreted by any, interrupted by any person or group of persons, so to render the orderly conduct of such meeting unfeasible, an order cannot be restored by removal of the individuals who are willfully interrupting the meetings. The members of the agency conducting the meeting may order the meeting room cleared and continue in session." And then it goes into things about electronic equipment and things like that. But are, you, members of the public who are disrupting and threatening and making the meetings disrupted can be asked to leave the meeting. And actually, the entire room can be cleared if, if the meeting cannot come back to order. When I'm finished, you can.
I'll understand.
Thank you. "Please take action, whether it is concerning a resolution, which you've done in the past, a town-wide policy, ordinance regarding civil discourse and public conduction of meeting. Ensuring civility allows the citizens to all have a voice in town, not just those who yell the loudest or those who are willing to stand up and speak regardless of fear and intimidation." So, you know, this has been an ongoing issue at town meetings when, when there, there are issues that are emotional and there are groups of people who have chosen that that's the best way to interact. And I strongly feel that it allows people who are willing to be disruptive and aggressive to win out. And a lot of people are afraid to, to speak out in that. There were a lot of people in that room at the BOE meeting who wanted to get up and speak about their concerns about the mask mandate being removed. And they were not, they were too intimidated to get up and talk, and the meeting wasn't able to continue, so. So that's my request to the board. And one last item I just want to say is that board members are elected officials who have great responsibility to uphold. But they are also our friends and our neighbors and should not be, have to put up with bullying. BOE members are volunteer, volunteer their time on behalf of students, families, and residents of Nor- North Haven. And I'm asking you to take some action to make sure they can do their unpaid jobs safely. Additionally, I found it concerning when some of the members of the public indicated that Mr. Frida had written an email supporting their position to remove mask mandates prior to the board meeting to discuss it. When I requested copies of the emails about the topic, it was clear that Mr. Frida informed members of the public that he recommended to the Board of Ed that the mandates be dropped. He didn't think government should mask, mandate masks, and it should be a parent's choice. The members of the public who came to the meeting to disrupt clearly felt justified in their position as it was held by the leader of North Haven, which was their words. Unfortunately, the parents in the room were, who were against removing the mask mandates, were not able to get up and speak and didn't have the backing of Mr. Frida. Well, I think you have the right to your opinion. I think it puts the Board of Ed in a very difficult position when they are, when you're telling members of the public that the BOE, what the BOE should do before the board has had a chance to discuss such an issue. So, you know, the mask mandate is, is not a simple issue. And there are, the vaccination rates are not great for kids five to twelve. There are children under the age of five who are not able to be vaccinated. And the mandates were rolled back without a clear plan or discussion of how that would work. It is unclear what options are available for parents who have students, school-age students who also have children in their home under the age of five or family members with conditions that put them at risk. A discussion that comes under the jurisdiction of the Board of Education should stay with the Board of Education. I, I really believe that they were not able to carry out their duties because that, the, the public disrupted them. And it's, and it's led to, I'm hearing from people who are very concerned their kids are going to school and how that removal of the mask mandates is being carried out. So I'm just, again, asking that this board consider taking up this issue at the next meeting.
Charles, you want to comment?
Well, the first thing that flashed through my mind was, if you ask these people to leave and try and throw them out, will that?
leave and try and throw them out, will that escalate the situation?
Well, I mean, if you have a police officer there, tells them they have to leave, just like in a public building, if someone was disrupting, you would have a police officer escort them out. And unfortunately, in board, board meetings across this state, there have been issues where people have been assaulted. And the more you allow it to continue, the more it escalates because people feel emboldened.
No, I agree with her. I had a flashback to when I was a kid. Growing up in Illinois, we had a tremendous littering problem and the town ran an experiment where they would roll the dumpster off at these, like Valley Service Road with a giant sign saying, "Free usage this weekend." I remember, this just drove my dad insane. But it was promptly filled up by Sunday night.
All right, thank you. All right.
Well, I, I, I think that Mrs. Caldwell makes a lot of good points. Near the end, when she was talking about the impact that disruptive behavior has on other people willing to speak, I, I have a lot of firsthand knowledge of that, people telling me that they, they've been afraid to speak. And this was going back to the rather contentious turf field days. And, you know, as an elected official, you know, there, we had a special Board of Selectmen meeting at the rec center and the gymnasium in May 31, 2017. I don't know why I remember it, but it was quite a shocking meeting. I was personally insulted at that meeting. But, you know, I'm an elected official and I think that when you put your name on the, on the ballot, a, a lot comes with that. And you, you have to accept criticism, even unreasonable criticism. But what I didn't like about that meeting and why I agree so much with, especially Mrs. Caldwell's latter points, is the impact it has on others who want to speak. I could take care of myself, but there are many people who are discouraged from speaking because of the atmosphere that is created when these volatile issues come about.
Well, I mean, it's, it's true.
That's my point of, point of view, my own personal experience. And you know what I'm talking about.
We saw in Cheshire, Gus, Governor Lamois had to be escorted out.
Yeah.
This is not just something that happened in North Haven, this is happening every Board of Ed meeting across the state. And just so you know, Mrs. Caldwell, when a resident asks me for my opinion and, and when the superintendent asks me for my opinion, I'm going to give him my opinion. And my opinion was it should have been, it should be after February 28, mask optional. I am not going to ignore an email or a phone call from a resident who's asking me for my opinion.
So I didn't ask you to ignore it, and I think that that, your response to me right now is part of, is part of the issue.
No, it's not.
I brought, I brought up the issue, I'm explaining to you how I feel. If you want to tell me in a respectful voice.
I ain't telling you in a respectful voice.
No, you were, you were pointing your finger and yelling at me and that's, that's problematic.
I'm trying to project my voice because you're sitting at least 30 feet away from me.
I can hear you well, and I, I understand that you, I, I'm not asking you to silence your voice, but I, I do think that if someone asks you about telling the board what they should do, there was a clear separation in state statute.
You, you read the emails, I, every email I recommend it. I don't tell the board what to do, I recommend based on an opinion.
But I think that the board should have had a chance to deliberate that, go to the meeting and talk to them, or let them know this is what I'm telling them.
They, they did. If you watch, did you watch the meeting?
I absolutely watched.
Did you hear Patrick Sturken in the beginning say that they were going to go to mask optional before public comment? Did you not hear that?
I heard all of that.
Right.
It was the people in the audience who didn't hear that.
So, so the, the Board of Ed let off with mask optional, so.
I understand that. The people in the, the people in the audience, for whatever reason, decided this was a meeting, they were going to let, unleash all of their anger out at the board. And, and I personally do not think, and again, you have your own opinion, you have your own approach, I personally do not think it's helpful when you have a group of people who clearly have one particular take on it, on the mask issue, and that you're supporting them and telling them you think the board should do this, because it's the board who ultimately has to make the decision. And if they go the other way from you, then they're, then, then you're leaving them open for people, you know, for the reaction that they got. And, you know, you can do what you want. I'm just saying that I think that that adds to, to the issue. And, and I also don't know if you have heard from the parents who are concerned about the safety of their children without the mask mandate in place, and there are plenty of them that are. So, you know, I, it was just, I was just commenting, I was surprised when I listened to that meeting that someone got up and said, "Mr. Frida just said today that he agrees with us," and then threw up their arms and said, "The leader of our town thinks that we, that this needs to go," or agrees with us. And, you know, when you have, what happens when you get a group of people together? You get the mob attitude. So, again, I'm not telling you how to do your job, I'm just letting you know how I, how what I, what I think about the fact that weighing in prior to the meeting, before the board had a discussion and voted, and they ended up not voting, but before that happened, I think it creates a problem for the Board of Ed.
I think the one thing you're missing is I'd already met with the superintendent who already asked me for my opinion before that board meeting, so.
Well, the conversation between you and the board, the, the superintendent is different than the conversation with you and multiple members of the public.
All right, very good.
Again, I think, and again, I think as Mike said, I mean, somebody misrepresented what he said, it was a recommendation. He didn't say, you know, I mean, and he, I think it was his opinion that, yeah, but ultimately, it's up to the Board of Education to make those decisions and, you know, it, you know, it, it happens that there's many other occasions that they might not have taken or have not taken his recommendation, so. Yeah, I, I, but I, I think, you know, you know, it, it, it comes back to what we talked about earlier in terms of, and it's unfortunate because this has been a very difficult period, you know, in the last two years, where you got people speeding, litterling, littering and maybe not acting in a, in a very civil fashion, you know, toward their neighbors. And, you know, again, you know, where they disagree. And that's, we have to get back to not be, not doing that. And again, I think the last two years has really further contributed to, you know, to, to some of the, the fact that people have become very, very tired and impatient and, you know, with, with everybody and each other. And that's, and we have to come back to being more recognizing that our, that we're similar, that we, that we're neighbors and we all live in the same town and we're going to try to come up with something that'll work for everybody. That's, you know, and again, purely based on the, you know, where we finally moved, you know, I, I think the, it seems like, again, the middle ground is that you don't have to mask, but, you know, if you believe that your children should mask, you're still more than welcome to, you know? So it's, it seems like, again, it's a, a step toward maybe, you know, in the right direction where, where people do have, do have choice, where I think a lot of people have objected to the lack of choice that they've had for the last two years.
I, I don't want to debate mask mandates. I mean, I understand what you're saying, I, I just.
And I'm, and I'm talking very neutrally in terms of not my, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to rationalize maybe exactly where, why some of this has happened. And I can understand the frustration that you probably saw at the Board of Education because it has been, for all of us, it's been a very difficult couple of years.
And I, I think that my, it's gotten to an explosive point at this point, but I, I don't think this is a new issue and a Sally brought back. He's came up with the fields, the very first time the man, the mascot issue came up, there was a, it was the same thing, it was a meeting that we actually had to discontinue. There was a police officer there and he kind of watched as I had to unplug the microphone because two people were getting ready to fight. So I, I just think that in order to make sure that that doesn't happen, people have to clearly understand the rules of meetings. And I can disagree with you and debate, and I'm fine with that, but I think there needs to always be a, a level of civil discourse that occurs at meetings. And if we don't enforce it, then we end up with what's happened at least three times this year, but has also happened in the past prior to this.
Well, I, I, I have two suggestions in response to Mrs. Caldwell's specific public comments with her concerns about civil discourse, because I, I certainly am hopeful and I am hope, and I'm confident that both of you are hopeful that meetings can be conducted in a civil fashion, and that's what her primary concern is. So I would have these two suggestions. First is regarding a police officer. We have had in the past, I've been here eight plus years, we've had police officers on occasion here at the Board of Selectmen meeting, when we thought it might have been necessary based on issues. And so perhaps when, it's, although it's very hard to predict what might ignite a meeting, sometimes you could tell in advance by having your pulse on what's going on, if, if a meeting has a higher potential to ignite and perhaps having a police officer there. And my second suggestion is, I listened very carefully to Mrs. Caldwell's reading of that statute from Freedom of Information, that perhaps the town attorney could prepare or a little summary that could go to all the chairman of all of our commissions, elected and appointed, and just making them aware of their rights as chairman to have someone removed or to clear the room to continue. Some chairman might not be aware of that. So maybe having some, something like that from the town attorney to educate all of our chairman might be helpful to address Mrs. Caldwell's concerns. So those are my two comments, thank you.
I think you threw up a good idea.
Okay.
Okay, so I think we'll talk to the town attorney and that. That's an excellent suggestion.
Thank you. So, we appreciate all public comments.
Very good, okay. All right, I think we're at the end, right?
Yeah, you, you have to announce, item 7, the, the next, the next month's meeting, you skipped that before you went to public comment.
So the Sally's point?
Yes.
The next meeting here at Memorial Town Hall is April 7, Thursday evening at 6:30, and we look forward to seeing everyone at that meeting, either here or on North Haven TV. So with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will move to adjourn.
I'll second. Second. Any other discussion?
Yay.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
All right.
Bye, thank you.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.